Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Candidates Forum presented by the Chamber of Commerce, serving Middletown, Monroe, and Trenton. I'm Lenny Robinson. I'll be your moderator tonight, and we welcome all the candidates for City Council tonight. We would say that we do have one candidate, Roy Gordon, who could not be here because of a conflict, and per the rules, he has submitted a letter, which I will be reading shortly, explaining his position for his reasons for running for City Council. The way this will work tonight, the questions have been asked by the Government Relations Committee of the Chamber of Commerce. They've been provided to Rick Pierce, and then he just provided them to me. None of the candidates have seen any of the questions, although the candidates have been briefed that the topics tonight will be including, but not limited to, revitalizing downtown Middletown, East End development, tax revenue, and infrastructure. We've asked the studio audience that if they have questions during tonight, that they're entitled to go ahead and write those questions down. However, if we run out of time, or the question has been asked or closely asked, we will not be reading that. The candidates will be provided a two-minute opening, and then to respond to each question, they will have a one-minute response period. At the end of the questioning session, each candidate will be provided one minute in which to give their campaign wrap-up. So, I know it's not a lot of time, candidates. We appreciate you being here, and first of all, I will echo what Mr. Pierce said, that for all of you who are volunteering to be a candidate for any public elected office, I think it's outstanding, and it shows your commitment and your eagerness to help this city continue to grow and thrive. So, for all of you, we appreciate you being here, and we'll start with the opening comments, and we're going in alphabetical order, and we'll start with Mr. Steve Bohannon. Steve, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Lenny. First off, I'd like to thank the Chamber for hosting this forum, and also thank Mr. Robinson for moderating. My name is Steve Bohannon. I've been a citizen of Middletown for 30 years, married to my lovely wife Kay for 35 years, and together we have three grown children. The reason I'm running for City Council is because I have been in this community, talking to residents for the past 30 years in my business as a roofing contractor. I'm getting all kinds of ideas from citizens on where the city's been, where it is, where they want them to go. What I can bring to the council would be that I feel that by hearing the citizens talk and giving me their reasons for things and their ideas, I can then pass it on to the rest of the council. If they agree with some of the things, then we can talk about it and possibly put it into legislation, which then would be carried out by the city manager. As council, we really are limited on what we can do with the city. We really are just a legislative branch that basically would create laws and regulations that the city would abide by. So, for us to really make laws, we can do that, but I will take the ideas that the citizens give, pass it amongst the council, and see if it can gel with at least three other members. Other than that, that's my main reason, is because I feel I have a voice and ear for the city, and I can present that information to the council as they request it. Thank you.
Steve Bohannon, thank you very much. Anita Scott Jones, Anita, your turn. Two-minute open.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. I moved to Middletown 15 and a half years ago. My husband grew up here, and my mother-in-law has been here for over 60 years. When I moved here in 2000, I needed something to do, because I'm not a person who just sits around. So, I attended every city council meeting for six years. I became involved in the city of Middletown. I sat on the Financial Oversight Committee. I was a member of the Police Advisory Board, and I was on the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, I did all of that prior to seeking election for the City Council, but in the process, still attending every city council meeting for six years. Eight years ago, I decided to run for City Council, and I sent out a flyer, and I simply said, "I am not asking for your money. I am not asking for anything except your consideration that you consider me as one of your candidates for City Council." The citizens did that eight years ago. They did it four years ago. I am not tired of serving the city of Middletown or the citizens of Middletown. I live here. This is my home, and this is what I'd like to continue to do with your help. However, if I'm not returned to City Council, I commit to still being a model citizen and serving the citizens of Middletown in whatever capacity I can. Thank you, sir.
Anita Scott Jones, thank you. Tal Moon, two minutes.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce as well, everybody here and everybody watching at home, for attending tonight's Candidate Forum. I always tell people that growing up in Middletown has made me a better, more complete person, because we're not all cut from the same cloth. Growing up here has given me the ability to relate and understand people of all different backgrounds. I was born and raised here in Middletown, graduated from Middletown High School, went to Miami University, and graduated with a degree in Political Science. I'm an agency owner at Moon &amp; Adrian Insurance, which is a 94-year-old agency here in town that my great-grandfather started. I'm married to my wife Sarah Lynn, who's a first-grade teacher. We're also excited to welcome our first baby this coming March. Among the many things I've learned growing up here in Middletown was to serve my neighbor and serve my community. I do not believe that when we face challenging times, that we should look away and hope our problems go away, but rather to engage and serve one another. That background and heart for Middletown is what has led me to run for Middletown City Council. We're at a crucial moment in our history. Middletown must address many critical issues, including aging infrastructure, subsidized housing, and economic development, all while supporting core city services. Things can be better, but only if we change how we operate. Residents have grown frustrated and are ready for a fresh perspective. My business experience, background in government, and my efforts with the Business Alliance have given me the knowledge and understanding for what drives economic development, job creation, and job loss. This knowledge will be put to work for Middletown through retaining our current employers while driving needed changes to make us in a more attractive place to locate a business. Thank you.
Tal Moon, thank you very much. And as I mentioned to the outset, Roy Gordon, a candidate for City Council, could not be here tonight. He did submit a letter, which he asked be read, so if you will indulge me, I will read that letter. And this is for Roy Gordon, a candidate for Middletown City Council. He was born and spent most of his life in Middletown. He's the second youngest of five kids, and has a great family history of being a blue-collar worker, with his grandfather, who started working at Armco in 1925, and his father in 1975. His mother worked at RCA and Xerox. Blue-collar jobs generally were low-wage positions, and they often struggled to make ends meet. Having few luxuries, his mom taught them to appreciate what God had given them and to take care of the precious things that they did have. His mother also taught him that no matter how bad you think things are, there are always people less fortunate than you. He's been employed in the blue-collar fields of carpentry and maintenance, and continues to be very involved in the Middletown community, and continuing to be a volunteer with Keep Middletown Beautiful. Over the years of working in the community, he's seen how people live, struggle to pay bills, and make ends meet. Often, he asks himself, what can be done to help those people who are less fortunate than me in this city that I love? He thought, "Well, I'll run for City Council and want to bring a new and better voice to the working class, low-income, and disadvantaged people of the Middletown community, who are limited in opportunities and assistance, and often left out completely," by giving different answers to questions, different solutions to questions, and different results to questions. He's looking forward to being elected and serving on the City Council of this great historic city. He wants to be a voice for the people as the city manager and city council plans for the fiscal and social needs of the community. He wants to be that voice to review fiscal impact, eliminate wasteful programs, and reduce wasteful expenditures. He wants to be that voice to take those savings and apply them to attract new businesses and jobs to Middletown, reduce red tape for industry and social programs, and to make Middletown the destination of choice for new businesses and the residents of Middletown. He would appreciate your vote for City Council. Early voting has started, and Election Day is November 3rd. Thank you from Roy Gordon. All right, with the openings out of the way, we're going to get into the meat of this, and we'll begin, and Mr. Bohannon, because we're going alphabetically, you have the first question, and then the first question, then we'll proceed to Ms. Scott Jones. In a recent article written by Ed Richter, who happens to be in our audience tonight, hello, Ed, from the Middletown Journal, or I guess I can say the Journal News, it indicates that all of you running for City Council are focused on improving the streets and economic development and job creation, as these are the top issues facing the city of Middletown over the next few years. So, let's take a look at these. Let's examine, first, talking about specific ideas on what you feel on repairing the streets, and how you, as a City Council person, would go about funding these improvements. So, Mr. Bohannon, we start with you.
Well, ironically enough, this morning, I sat down and talked to the city engineer about the streets, and asked him approximately, how much would it cost to fix all the streets in Middletown that are in bad condition? He informed me that it would cost somewhere about $160 million to fix all the streets in Middletown. Now, that is based over a five-to-seven-year program, maybe 10-year program, that the city is working with. So, based on that and that large a number, to be able to get those kind of numbers, we would have to get some sort of grants and loans from the federal government. We can try, and the only way that I see would be also bringing in new jobs. If we can bring in high-paying jobs, it can bring in income tax money to the city, that will help to subsidize that. But the $160 million is, we just can't do that overnight. New businesses coming into town, I know there's new construction being done, and there's going to be money coming in from the new construction, but that just, there's not enough money to be able to do what we need to have done. We can't satisfy all the streets in a four-year period of time that I would be on council or any of the rest of us would be. So, that would be what I would look at, would be just the large numbers that we'd be talking about as far as the money we'd need to generate, but federal money would be basically that, combined with new jobs, income.
All right, now, you ask, I'm going to ask a follow-up question, because you said grants and loans. Now, would you be in favor, then, of the city using its bonding capacity to go out and bond for more street repairs and pay that over time, or what specifically are you looking at as far as loans?
If the citizens of Middletown would want us to go out and utilize the bond system and buy bonds, solve bonds, then yes, I would be for that. It'd be what the citizens would want, not basically what I'd, when I'd want to go out and get the viewpoint of the citizens to find out if they'd be willing to do that, and then go ahead and do it if they wanted to.
All right, thank you. Ms. Scott Jones, your take on streets and how to fund them, what's your ideas, and how to implement them on council?
Mr. Robinson, we are doing that little by little. I've been on the council for eight years. We have a 20-year plan for our streets. You can look around this city, and especially in the past year, and see that there has been improvements. We are extending and improving Oxford State Road, Yankee Road into Monroe. We have a $600 million NTE plant in which we broke ground yesterday, which will bring jobs and construction jobs and long-term jobs to this community. We have the Suncoke Plant, and as far as the roads, it's those type of businesses that we try, from an economic development perspective, that we try to woo into this city, because you've got to have the roads to be able to handle the traffic and the trucks and that type of thing. And so, it's easy to say that we would do this, this, and that, but at the end of the day, the people elect us to be able to educate ourselves, to be able to know that really there are only a few ways that you can bring economic development into this city, and job creation, and then improve your streets and your infrastructure. People don't want us to raise taxes, and so if you can't get the jobs to improve the streets and the roads, you're in a conundrum.
I think as a follow-up to you as well, people need to realize that City Council back some, almost 30 years ago, put to the voters, "Do you want to continue to earmark a certain amount of income tax to go for the streets, or should we just put that into the general fund?" And it was the community at large, rather than City Council or City Commission back then, that made that determination.
You're absolutely right. The city, however, this particular council has committed more monies this past year in the budget for the streets. So, we do understand that, and with the paving of the town mall and some of the other street pavings that are going on, what is refreshing is to hear, "Oh, we see the improvements. We see that happening." Is it going to happen in the next 10 years completely with every street? It doesn't happen in any other city, and it's not going to happen in Middletown. We are working on it, and if we keep council members who are committed to improving our city, keep their personal agendas out of it, and then it will happen little by little, day by day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moon, your answer on what you would do on council for the streets, how to fund them, and what your plan would be, long-term, short-term?
Yeah, thank you for the question, though. I'm glad it was asked. This is something that our community's talked about for at least the last 10 years. As I've been knocking on doors the last three months, it's something I talk about with the vast majority of people that I interact with. Something I've been advocating is that the new construction payroll that the other folks have mentioned, that's going to be a one-time shot of money. I would suggest that we take as much of that as possible and earmark that specifically for our roads. I wouldn't advocate using that for ongoing expenses, because obviously, as I said, this is a one-time shot of money, whereas those legacy costs would live on with payroll. Additionally, we talked about the dedicated fund. You mentioned that a little bit earlier. I think that's something that people I've talked to have interest in exploring. I think we need to have all options on the table, because state and federal grants, obviously, we should pursue them, but we should not ever have the expectation that the state or the feds, the state or the feds are going to bail us out, because they're not going to come in with $160 million to fix our roads. If we're going to fix the problem, it has to be through economic development, as we've talked about. We have to drive more jobs, higher wages, to truly, long-term, fix this problem. But as a council person, it obviously takes three votes to get anything done. I think we should have a community conversation and explore the best way to solve this problem long-term.
Well, something you mentioned about it's a one-time shot, grants and those kinds of things are also kind of one-time shots. Is there anything in your agenda that you would say, gee, a tax increase might be something we ought to put for the voters, or is that a discussion item at all?
That's not something that I would look to advocate for. We have a 1.75% income tax as it sits. If we bumped it up to two, that would put us as high as the highest folks around us, you know, geographically. Hamilton and Oxford, I think, are the only two neighboring communities that are at a 2% income tax. I was talking to some folks that are looking to move to town the other day. When they realized our property and income tax rates, they decided to go to a different community. So, I think we have to be very conscious of what's going to bring people in and what's going to drive people out when we're talking about taxes.
Thank you. Ms. Scott Jones, I'll start with you. The other question that came up in the newspaper article written by Ed Richter is that, trying to give as many plugs as we can, is that on economic development, let me ask you, define, if you would, what you think the city of Middletown is best suited for attracting jobs? In other words, what kind of jobs do you think the city of Middletown is best suited for? And how do we go about attracting them? And as a city council member, what is your involvement, if any, in attracting jobs?
In order to answer that question, we have to realize historically what the city of Middletown has been. The city of Middletown has been an industrial city, and, you know, when Forbes said we were on the fastest-dying cities list, and they used two criteria, which was, at the time, the workers from AK Steel were locked out, and then they looked at the number of people who held a bachelor's degree or higher, and insulted just about everybody who made the choice to come out of high school and go to work, as opposed to go to college and be in debt with student loans. Middletown has the ability to attract any job that it can attract. That's the purpose of the Economic Development Director and their team, is to go out and try to woo people. Middletown has somewhat redefined itself, and it is the only city along I-75 that has had to do that. 15 years ago, Mason was farmland. 15 years ago, Westchester was somewhat farmland. And so, Middletown, being an old industrial city, has had to redefine itself, and I think it is doing a good job of doing that. It is an education, healthcare, arts hub. And the East End, you have the Research Center for AK Steel that has made a $300 million investment into this city, and people can say, "Well, you know, that's just moving from one end of town to the other." That's not necessarily true, and then the fact that they could have had, could have chosen any other place to do that. We've got NTE who's coming to make a $600 million investment into our city. So, those are jobs. There will still be industrial jobs. There are light industrial jobs, medical device jobs, a number of jobs that can come to this city.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moon, on to you, about what do you think Middletown's best suited for in attracting jobs? And on City Council, what would you do to help attract those kinds of jobs?
When I think about attracting jobs, at least relevant to this question, I think about the reason Procter &amp; Gamble is in Ohio. It's because Ohio is the cross, is a cross-section of their demographic for the type of people that they're marketing their products to. I don't think Middletown is any different. I think Middletown is a cross-section of America. We're not pigeonholed as just manufacturing, or just education, or just high-tech. I think we can have all those things. We have a steel company, AK Steel, that has 2,000 jobs and around 2,000 jobs in this community that's been here for over 100 years. I would be happy if our economic development team would continue to pursue manufacturing, light, heavy manufacturing. That's who we are. We need to continue to do that well. That being said, we have a great land out on the East End that is being looked at as medical and industry. We need to continue to pursue that. Historically, we had paper mills here. It's because of the great water that we have. That's why Miller Coors is in Trenton. We need to tap that resource as well and use our natural resources to our advantage.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And Mr. Bohannon, to you.
The three areas that I think the city is qualified for would be aeronautical, tactical, as well as medical. With the location that we have between GE and Wright-Patterson, we're sitting in a prime location for the aeronautical industry. We've got an airport sitting over here that could be expanded to bring in aeronautical business, whether it be repairing jets or converting jets. We've got a hospital out on the interstate where we could put in medical facilities, medical buildings, medical technicians, and then we also have the engineering with the AK. We'd really be great. I know that the land that the research is on, we've got a six-acre piece of property out there that basically is sort of on hold for us right now, that could be used if we could lure AK Headquarters back to town, which I think would be a great opportunity for them to be right next to their research center. So, as far as, it's three-fold. I think we should be aeronautical. I think we should be medical, and I think we should be technical. And we've got the education aspect all around us. UD, Cincinnati Xavier, the education value is all around us, where we can pull from to bring in the students or the employees that have the education needed for all those fields.
All right, I'm going to go off-script here just a little bit, because my background is in industrial and commercial real estate development, and you all have poised positions of what the city can do, or how the city is best situated with so forth, with airports and water and on. Ms. Scott Jones, you talked about the roads as being that infrastructure helping in business. So, let me ask this question. When we've all talked about industrial development, or economic development, if you will, and I'm going to start first with you, Mr. Moon, talk about then, whose responsibility is it, and how do you see this partnership working? Is it private partnership? Do they take the lead? Does the public take the lead? How does that work together, with public and private partnership? Is there such a thing, and how does it work? And what would you see yourself doing on City Council to achieve that?
My view, when it comes to government creating jobs, the government does create jobs. However, I think it's generally the private sector that's going to create jobs. When it comes to Middletown, the public jobs are the jobs that are more or less within this building. So, when it comes to what council does, council is really responsible for creating an environment that is advantageous for growth to occur. Specifically, to help drive economic growth, as I've talked to people, one of the things I've been advocating for is we need to take a fresh look at our zoning. As I've talked to people that have wanted to bring business to town, they say that the zoning is not cost-effective. It's actually a deterrent, and we need to take a fresh look at that, and also take a fresh look at our master plan, and see what type of business do we want to draw in. So, really, to answer your question, I think it's more about government creating the proper environment and not necessarily creating jobs. Private industry creates jobs.
All right, Mr. Bohannon, you're a private business owner, so...
Yeah, I'd agree with Tal. The government should not create jobs in this case. You're a prime example. I mean, you have your land out there by the interstate, which you've been working for five years, trying to get developed to help downtown, or to help out at the interstate. I feel that the government, the city, can help with some abatements and things like that, from tap-in fees and so forth, but as far as growing out there, it's going to have to be done on the private sector, because when private sector grows, you know, everybody grows. And just like the Manchester here in town, the gentleman that purchased the Manchester, his ideas were, "I'm going to be in the forefront to be able to turn this around and start Middletown, get other investors to start seeing Middletown as a viable location, to start a business and come to town." So, it's going to take those entrepreneurs in the private sector to bring those businesses to town, not so much the government stepping in and making anything happen. They can give the subsidies as far as the tax abatements and things, but I don't say that they should subsidize it. I feel that if a business wants to come to town, though, the business has to prove that they've got the funding in the bank to at least cover 60% of the cost to do the job, and not rely on federal grants and historic grants.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bohannon. Mrs. Scott Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Several years ago, the citizens came and said that they did not want the city to be involved in the real estate business. We should not be buying buildings. We should get out of the business, and we should become more friendly to the business people who are coming in here. I know several businesses that have come in, didn't go through the proper protocol, and then had to close down. So, I know that under the current administration and with the current council, we now have a one-stop area here in the city building where people can get access to permits, know what they're available to do. As far as the city being responsible for public-private partnerships, there are a number of public-private partnerships. Cincinnati State was one. The Green Tree Health Science Academy is one. There are several that, and whether the public-private partnerships center around funds or a name being given. Seven years ago, they asked, "How do you feel about regionalization and partnering with other people?" So, you know, I think that's part of it. Now, whether we should be in the real estate business or not, it depends.
Okay. Now, this next question is going to kind of wrap up what we've talked about with, as far as job creation, economic development, and streets. This question is, the city manager presented a five-year plan for turning Middletown around. It's improving revenues and also starting infrastructure repairs. We've hit on some of the streets that are being repaired now. Number one, are you familiar with the plan that the city manager's proposed, and would you change anything in the manager's plan to improve the city faster or better than the plan already submitted? And we're going to start back with you, Mr. Bohannon.
Thank you. No, I've sat down with Mr. Atkins numerous times and talked about various issues here in the city, and the plan that he has put out there, I am 100% behind. He's on the right track. He has taken basically something that this city has basically been sitting dormant for the last eight years, because of the economic downturns and things in the area, and we've basically not done much. And since he's taken over, he's came up with some fresh ideas, some new ways to move us in the right direction, to generate economic development. He's revamped the Economic Development Department. They are starting to revamp the zoning rules that we have. Our zoning rules are well out of date. So, there's a lot of things that Mr. Atkins has done, and I'm 100% behind everything that he's done going forward.
All right, Mrs. Scott Jones?
Thank you, sir. I have read Mr. Atkins' plan. It's Mr. Atkins' plan. So, as far as the city council's role is concerned, our job is not to interfere with the city manager. I'm very pleased that he had a 119-page plan that covered every single issue that the city of Middletown has, and it is our job to look at that plan, review that plan, compare it to the master plan, make sure that it works for the city of Middletown, and help him to implement that. The job for the city council is, we operate from a zero-sum budget, and we have to understand what that means. It means your revenues equal your expenditures, or vice versa. And so, when you operate from that, and we talk about, we're supposed to be responsible for improved roads, infrastructure, and public safety, how do you do that if it's a zero-sum budget? You've got to either take from someplace else and put here, take from someplace else and put here, to equal zero. And so, he has a wonderful plan. He's already started to implement that plan. He has a council that is helping him to support that plan, but it's his plan.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Yeah, I'm also familiar with Mr. Atkins' plan. I'm glad that he's bringing some new ideas, some innovative changes, looking at things from all angles, and it's a fresh perspective. The other thing I was glad to see him do, he brought a baseline tax incentive package for businesses that want to come to town. They're asking for those tax incentives. We do need to have something ready to present when it's appropriate, but as Ms. Scott Jones said, it is the city manager's plan, and there's going to be five people on City Council. Budgets change every year. Tax revenues change. Costs change, so I don't know that we can commit to three, four, or five years down the road to following a plan when we don't know what the budget is going to bring, but I'm very glad that there's a fresh perspective coming on it.
Well, I appreciate all the accolades. It doesn't mean anything that he happens to be sitting in our audience tonight. It doesn't mean anything that he happens to be sitting in our audience tonight.[941.00][941.00](Laughter). No, but it's nice that you all are familiar with the plan, and I appreciate your input. So we have a question from the audi, from the audience, that kind of sums up what we've been talking about so far, about all the improvements. Everything's linked together for, from economic development, streets, jobs, and so forth. The question really is, how would you envision, and we'll start with Mrs. Scott Jones, how would you envision then packaging all this up and selling it to either a business that wants to come into a town, or a family that wants to move into town?
I do that and have done it for the 15 years that I've been here, and I believe it starts with each and every one of us. I was at a meeting some five or six years ago, and it was out of Middletown, but down in Cincinnati. And someone said, you know, if Middletonians would stop talking negatively about themselves, probably no one else would either. And I come from a school of thought, and I was raised that, you know, you don't think more highly of yourself than you ought to, but you also don't put yourself down. There are enough people who do that. I think if each one of us on the council, each one of us in this community, in our respective spheres of influence, because we all have them, if we're at church, if we're on a regional board, or if we're outside of the city in the state of Ohio, we have an obligation to sell our city. I'm originally from Montgomery, Alabama. Most people's perception of Alabama is a negative one. I don't have that perception. I lived it for 36 years. I talk Montgomery, Alabama up, and when people ask me where I live, I don't say that I live in Cincinnati, Ohio. I don't say that I live in Dayton, Ohio. I say I live in Middletown, Ohio. So it starts with each one of us.
So I guess my follow-up question, lightheartedly, would be, Ohio State?
Auburn.
Okay.[1058.42][1058.42](Laughter). Good comeback. Mr. Moon?
Sure. I agree. We talked about it at our forum at the Second Ward on Saturday, and one of the things I mentioned was that if we're gonna really make the changes we wanna make, it's gonna take everybody getting involved. It's gonna be, need to be the faith communities, obviously, our city council, our city administration, and individuals out in the community. We all have to be pulling together if we're gonna get this community where we want it to go. We can't bury our heads in the sand and say that we do not have problems, because we certainly have problems, but we also can't be afraid to tout the changes that have happened and the successes that have occurred. As far as selling Middletown, I think we have so many great things about this community. Let's start with education. Cincinnati State, Miami University, these are school, high, schools of higher, institutions of higher learning that are meeting with businesses, designing plan, education plans specific to the needs of our employers. We're matching, we're matching what the workforce needs to what the education is. I think that's something that our chamber is doing, that our city's doing, that our employers are doing, that is gonna set us apart when it comes to driving new jobs. We need to sell our education. We need to sell our history. We need to sell our manufacturing background. We need to sell our blue-collar attitude, where we work hard and we don't take for granted what we have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Bohannon, how would you sell everything with?
Well, combine a little of both. Basically, yes, we are, and in the, in the atmosphere of everybody else, we are the city that loves to hate itself. And we, as a city, need to start respecting ourselves and talking good about ourselves, as Ms. Jones has stated. We are sitting in a prime location with our educational systems. What we need to be able to do is be able to provide for people moving to town, housing. Right now, we do not have the housing stock that new, young couples and young families are looking for in this town. We've got an overabundance of older homes that don't fit the criteria that the younger families need. So in some ways, you know, we're starting with our economic development, our community development, by getting rid of older homes that are outdated. We can continue to do that, put up newer homes that younger families will want. We need to promote ourselves. We need to get our Economic Development Department out there and start attending forums and conventions and things to promote our city, so that we can then show the industry out there what Middletown is all about and what we have to offer. Because like everybody said, we have been industrial. So we've got that background that we can fall into if there are industrial businesses that wanna move into this area.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moon, I'm gonna ask you this question now, as we start this next round. And we've touched upon a little bit, in fact, you and I discussed this, and it had to do with, with tax revenues and increased taxes. Mrs. Scott Jones talked about the zero-sum game, the zero-sum budget that we have. And given that everything is a zero-sum game, if you intend to increase spending in areas such as public safety, paving, economic development, do you envision tax increases that you would enact? And if not, what would you reduce? Mrs. Scott Jones talked about, if you, if you spend here, you have to take from there. What would you see as your plan as a council member to effectively create that zero-sum game, yet get the money needed for what you want to do as a council member, to implement those changes?
Yeah. First thing I would say is something I've already said tonight. When we're talking about increased costs for infrastructure, we need to take the construction payroll that's gonna be a one-time shot of money. Those are gonna continue to come in. We're gonna continue to have construction projects over the coming years, as new industry comes to town. We need to use those monies for infrastructure funds, to pave our streets. But direct to the, to the budget process, it's not really city, city council's job to set budget, budget, it's each department's job to come up with their own budget numbers. City council either approves or disapproves of those numbers. So that would be my answer.
Okay. Mr. Bohannon, on to you then.
Well, just like Tom says, I mean, council's not responsible for balancing the budget. It's the city manager's job to balance the budget. But the way that you get money in town is to create jobs, bring jobs to town. Jobs will solve all the problems that we need for fixing our roads, fixing our infrastructure, fixing our public safety. You bring jobs to town, you bring money to town. We can't keep just looking at Middletown as a fishbowl and just keep working with the same numbers, year after year, cutting, cutting, cutting. We need to start putting some more money into the fishbowl to make things work, so we can grow.
All right, Mrs. Scott Jones, final word.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. You know, someone asked me recently, asked me was I shoe-in to be back on council, and I said absolutely not. The only advantage that I have is that I've been on for eight years, and I know what we can and what we cannot do. The city needs jobs. The city is preparing the city to be able to create those jobs. But the people in the city have to be willing to change. The city manager gave his department heads a task to say, you have this much money in your budget, and you tell us how you want to spend this much money in your budget. It required a change, but for the first time, since we've been mentioning Mr. Richter all night, for the first time, I believe that there was an article quoted by Mr. Atkins that says, for the first time in a number of years, we are at an okay level with our budget. And that means that people have been willing to dig, dig their heels in, change their perceptions about, just because something has been that way, doesn't mean that's the best way to do it. And then we, as a council, help them to enforce and enact that legislation.
Okay. I've got one final question that I wanna ask. It came from the audience, and this has to do with communication, community communications. And the question really revolves around better communication between the citizens of Middletown and the community as far as events. It says, currently, many residents are not aware of activities or events available in town, so they mistakenly think there is little to do in this town. And then also, city-related rumors are reduced if the facts are readily available. Talking about misinformation and such. Just very quickly, if we can keep it to about 30 seconds, and I think I start with Mrs. Scott Jones on this one. What can be done to improve community communications? I know the TV Middletown is off the air right now. Sorry. But, but absent that, what, what do you see as effective community communication?
TV Middletown is not off the air, it's just changing in a different format. And so, but that is happening too. We have, if you come into the city building, there is an information desk there that wasn't there five years ago, where people can ask questions. There are several of us on that council that pretty much show up everywhere in this community, where we're requested to show up, even when we're not. You have the city newsletter that goes out. You have access to the internet information. There's a calendar of events. One of my predecessors on council, Ann Moore, has a community calendar that, all you have to do is request a copy from her, and it's updated all the time with the hundreds of events that go on in Middletown.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Yes, I would agree. There's, there's lots of things that residents can do to get more information, whether it's your elected representatives being out in the community, your city manager, your chiefs of police and fire. But one thing I would add, social media, Facebook and Twitter. All generations are on social media platforms now. If you go to the city of Middletown, they're on Facebook, they're on Twitter, like their page. The same with the fire and police, like their page or follow them, and you'll be aware of just about everything going on in this city.
Okay, Mr. Bohannon, you have a final word tonight.
Well, basically, they've summed it up as far as the avenues of being able to get information from this city. Mr. Atkins has done a fantastic job. He's, he's even started his own blog out there, where people can communicate directly with him and voice their opinion on things that he's doing with the city. So with the Facebook, and you know, the police, the fire, the city, all of them are in the social media network. So, and just people have to be willing to not just have it given to them, they may have to get out of their little comfort zone and come and find it themselves.
All right, very good. All right, candidates, that's the end of the questions. I appreciate very good answers, some tough questions for you, I'm sure. But let's talk about now, the, you have now one minute each to sum up your campaign, all this hard work, in 60 seconds. And Mr. Moon, we begin with you.
Okay. Again, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, everyone here tonight, and everybody watching at home. Thank you for coming out to learn about, learn a little bit about all of us running for office. The business community plays a vital role in our future. Middletown is a great community with much to be proud of, but changes are needed to move us forward. City council plays a large role in fostering that change, but not the only role. We need more engage, a more engaged community, because city council alone cannot make all the necessary changes. I understand the challenges we face and have the historical perspective of how we got here. My lifelong love for Middletown, business experience, and sound judgment have equipped me to make the changes we need to make. If you're looking for a council representative that will strive to serve you humbly, honestly, and with no agenda other than the betterment of our entire community, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the chamber, Mr. Robinson. And all I'd, what I'd like to say is basically that, in my 30 years of being in Middletown, as I said earlier, I've listened to the citizens of Middletown. And I can, will continue to listen to the citizens of Middletown. And any questions that they have, I would be happy to bring them back to council if I'm elected. I will do the best job that I possibly can to represent the citizens, and for that, I ask that, if I've answered the questions that have been asked tonight in a positive manner that you've expected, then I would hope that on November 3rd, that you would vote for Steve Bohannon. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Scott Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I first want to thank my husband, Lyndon Lorenzo Jones, who is in the audience. This position takes its toll on your personal life, and if you don't have that support base, you may occupy the seat, but you will not be able to function in the best possible way without your support from home. So I first want to thank him for all of his support these past eight years. I want to continue to serve the citizens of Middletown. I have served with integrity, I have served with fairness all over this entire community. I ran eight years ago at large, when it was unpopular for me to do so. But by the grace of God, and with the help of the community, I was elected, not once, but twice.